Okay, seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, just make a note, everybody is present tonight. All business approval minutes, the regular meeting minutes of November third, 2022 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November third, 2022 as presented.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? No takers? New business? Item number two is a housing study proposal. A few months ago, the city council discussed conducting a housing study to pinpoint housing needs in Lansing and to help Lansing, help guide the city on how to achieve housing objectives. The city received two proposals to conduct housing study, one from RDG and the other from Thomas P. Miller and Associates. RDG's proposal was $30,000 and Thomas P. Miller and Associates' proposal was $79,500. So I need a motion to approve the proposal from RDG to conduct a housing study for the amount not to exceed 30,000 and authorize a necessary signatures.
Oh, move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I guess I'm, just say something about this, I'm overpaying tens of thousands of dollars in studies, really. We do payroll studies, now we're doing a housing study. It's not like we pay a lot of money for these studies and then we pay more money for them to tell us how to implement, and then we pay more money for something else. It's a never-ending steamrolling effect. I'm just over it.
Right, so, I mean, a lot of reasons that cities do studies is they actually support things that you're trying to, not, I mean, trying to get funding for, or typically they're going to ask you for what kind of study. So, we did this study because we want to know, especially for people who want to build housing, right, whether it's apartments, new apartments, whatever, whether or not our city needs it. So we either can say, you know what, we don't need middle income, or we don't need lower income, we need a lot more of these houses, based on the study. That gives the council at least some background and, I guess, bona fides to say, we don't want that to be built in that area.
But I guess my point is, we live, we live here, we should know what we want. I mean, we talk to the people who live here, we talk to our constituents, we should be in touch with them to know what they want in our community. I mean, we're, we're the, if we're not communicating, I mean, talking to our community and don't know what they want, then we're out of touch.
They want a group.
Yeah.
Another component that, that this can be utilized for, that rural housing incentive district program, so that's, kind of operates like a TIF district, but the state oversees that. You know, if a city doesn't have a housing needs assessment, developers can't utilize that program. So that's another component of it. I, you know, I, I really do understand and empathize with that thought of, of having studies and them collecting dust, though, I hate that too. But, I, I will say, though, you know, originally, the, that first proposal we got, Matt's in my jaw, kind of hit the floor. And, but then we were, we were pretty pleased with the RDG proposal, and, and not only the budget on that, we felt like they were a better fit, we felt like they were more qualified. So we, we feel good about that aspect of it, but I, I, I understand the perspective of being frustrated by, by studies, I do understand that.
And I under, I also understand the frustration, and, and I've had the same thoughts that you've had, Jesse, but I, I want to get it right. So, that's what I look for in a study, is so that we, whatever decision we make, we get it right. And, that's why I think it's necessary we have the studies. I don't, I mean, I'm pleased that it was more than, what, 60% cheaper, 70% cheaper than the other proposal, but still $30,000, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
I get it. But again, I just, whatever we do, I, it's just real important that, you know, we don't shoot from the hip, we actually get it right.
We, we have, in the past, we've done numerous studies as far as the proposal, where, where to put apartments, and what we want to do, and where we want to zone this, and zone that, we paid to have that done. The comprehensive plan, what, to me, can somebody give me a, shortly, a definition of what the difference between the comprehensive plan, to somebody that we've paid to compare us with another city, of where to put apartments, where we need housing, why we need housing, compared to what we're doing when we do these kind of things like this, above and beyond the comprehensive plan, when we've paid to have a comprehensive plan done.
Comprehensive plan told us where we need to put apartments, we moved apartments.
Actually...
Where we're zoning.
Actually, that's in the, the growth area. So, I mean, part of comprehensive plan is to look in the future, right, and say, this is where we think we're going to grow, and if we do grow, this is what we want in this area, and this is what we'd like to have in this area. It's not specifically what you already own and where you might put something currently. So, that's kind of the difference.
The comprehensive plan is also very overarching. Like, it, it might talk about trails, it might talk about parks, it might talk about public transit, it might, it might talk about a lot of different things, whereas this is very specific to housing. What, what types of housing might be needed in Lansing, how we accomplish that, things like that.
Well, if we put, if we put the housing in, it, it, it's something that, to me, it's like it's something we're paying for.
Yeah.
And then we're going to have somebody else that might come in and don't want to do it that way. They, they want to build a subdivision right to left, and we want it, you know, the other way. So, I, I, I just, I, I don't, I, I think, to me, I see like, the committees that we got together, they're telling us what we, what we need, they comparing us to other cities, the, the, they, I, I just, it seems to me like they're just awful close together.
You know, it's, it's possible there might be some type of zoning recommendations that could change on this, like, maybe this guy will come in and say, hey, people don't like mowing their lawns the way they did in the 90s, so maybe they'll recommend smaller yards, or so, you know, and that's something we can implement in the comprehensive plan. I, I think he's just going to be able to give us ideas on, on things that we can do to, to accomplish our housing goals.
We never did ever go back to the comprehensive plan and finish some of the, because we weren't very happy with the way, some of the answers, I guess, is the easiest way, it came out of, from the group, and we were going to talk about it again, but we never did. Now, are we implementing, are we going to implement this plan? You know, I'm, I'm not against it, that's what the council, you know, you get paid to big money, that's what, you know, if we need to do this, if you feel this, that's your expertise, but I was just trying to figure out how, between a, you know, comprehensive plan and this study, now, are we going to implement this study into the comprehensive plan?
Right. It's possible there could be recommendations that we would want to implement, and then, I mean, you'd, you'd take it before the planning commission, but yeah, it's possible.
Well, the comprehensive plan was not set, no.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So, and it's been a few years, things have definitely changed. You know, at one time, we were being told that people, my daughter's generation and maybe one or two above them, aren't interested in owning homes. They'd rather rent. They don't want the burden of actually owning a home and being, being responsible for. So, and we can ask everybody in this room what they think we ought to do, and however many people are in this room, that's how many different answers we're going to get. I look at this as a suggestion and unbiased.
Yeah.
Here's what we think you ought to do. I don't, I'm not a fan of spending money like this, but the other thing is, this was done because we asked the employees to do it. We didn't say do this, but don't exceed this. So, if we're going to ask them to do it, and there's limitations we want to put on them, let's put them on them up front. Just because we don't like the cost now, and I don't think anybody does, I think we're all agreeing we'd rather spend that money somewhere else. But, we've committed to it, we asked them to do it, they did it, you did it, Matt did it, and now we're going to say no because we don't like the cost?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it, Dean, I'm just saying that it...
There you are.
Huh? No.
I'm done.
I'm just saying that it needs to be, okay, the way we can start implementing some of these studies above and beyond the comprehen, the comprehensive plan is, is, was designed, we sat here and argued, you broke off in groups, where you wanted multifamily, where we wanted to do this, where we, you know, they started with multifamily out here on the highway, and it ended up back over here.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I, I just want to know if we can, if we, don't, don't pay for these, and if we're not going, we can't put them in the comprehensive plan.
It's, yeah, the, the difference of, of this study is going to tell you what types of housing you need in your city. Not where you put it, not why you would put it there, but what types you need. So that gives the council the, the, you know, the background and understanding to say, when somebody comes in and says, we want to build this, and you say, you know what, that's not on our list of needs at this time. Nobody can push back. I mean, legally, we, we have something that says, these are the needs of our city that we are going to go after.
And that also go, the inverse of that, Mayor, is, we've had discussions in the past, and it wasn't that long ago, where there was just talk from the, the dais about limiting certain construction times.
Right.
Well, if you want to do that, then from legal side of the house, I would say, you want a study.
That's what I...
Because if you're going to restrict, or expand, or do any of those things, it's going to affect the development world outside of your current codes, you need a study. Because otherwise, I can assure you, if you just, we know what we want in our community, like Mr. Garvey said, that might be true, but people have certain rights under our codes to build certain things. And if we just off the hip, you know, just shoot from the hip and, and do things, you can assure there's going to be pushback and potential litigation out of something like that. Where if you have a study that backs the, the rationale and has numbers to it, well, then you're, you're on better footing when you, if, if this was what the council would do down the road.
That's why I like Gene's word, where he used the word unbiased, and that hit on him.
I guess, as, as long as it comes in and it don't go down the road a ways, and then somebody wants to change something, does the council, the council still have the, the chance to be able to, to adjust the, the, adjust what they're going to have for us for this?
For the, for the housing study?
I mean, can we make as a council?
Yeah. I mean, I know there's, there's going to be opportunities for, for you guys, or local developers, builders, realtors to, to chime in, I guess, and, and...
So you want to pay $30,000 for a study but not do what they say, then? If you're going to say, oh, well, you gave us this advice, we're, we're not going to do it because we don't like what you gave us. That's exactly what he just said, right?
No, it might change, it might change.
I think he's asking, like, as part of the study, can you provide input into the study? And, in the proposal, that is part of it.
Yeah.
The proposal states that they will bring in developers, you know, council members, whoever, to be part of the working group, to help set that up. So, yes, that would be...
So, Tim, I'm looking at $50,000 difference between one proposal and another. He says you're very happy with the lower amount, and that's what's on the table. What are we, we're going for that huge amount of money? What are we not going to get that we're going to pay? That's what I couldn't pull from the, from the read ahead.
No, I...
I mean, there's got to be some kind of significant amount of something for that big of a difference.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what, what the difference is. I mean, I can tell you, I, I spoke to other cities that have utilized the RHID program in Kansas, and they've used RDG. So, I mean, these guys are familiar with their requirements if developers want to utilize that RHID program. So I can tell you, they're qualified, they've done work in other cities. I don't know why that other, I don't think RDG's proposal is cheap, but I think that other one might have been overpriced a little bit. I guess I'll say that.
But not a lot of difference in the proposals, what they're proposing to do for the city.
I didn't see anything that, that we would need that's not being done.
Okay. Thank you.
Some people just think highly of us.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. So, call a roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
No.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item number three is the final plat for Lansing Town Center replat. The mayor and city, city council property owners of 00000 Center Drive have applied for the approval of the final plat for the Lansing Town Center replat subdivision, which will replat an existing group of four parcels into three tracts. If approved, the final plat will allow the property owner to subdivide approximately 18.1, or 11 acres, into two lots and one tract, allowing for the potential future projects to be considered. The property is currently zoned B3, and no rezoning is being requested at this time. The final plat meets the requirements of the checklist. The planning commission voted to recommend the approval of the final plat application with a 5-0 vote. Need a motion to approve the final plat for Lansing Town Center replat.
Oh, move, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
This, this is what we want to rezone it to, correct? I mean, we're...
There's no rezoning on this.
We're just replating.
We're replating.
Kind of reconfiguring.
Because we, it's been there for 20 years, we've, we've purchased it, we're trying to get something going, and I mean, we're sure this is what we want to do. I'm just asking.
I'm sure that, in order to do the next thing on the agenda, that we would need this to be platted into one lot
True, yeah.
for 12 something acres. Yes.
Correct, yep. You said it well.
I was, there? I was looking at the, the diagram, you got a big cigar oblong portion out there.
Right.
Is that unusable, or is we throwing it away?
No, I mean, it's, in fact, the first section of Lot 1 shows that, like, a half of that is actually cut off in part of that Lot 1. The other half was left as a separate tract with the second lot, Lot 2.
But it's still going to be usable?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it could be combined with that other second lot, we just don't know yet, but we kept them separate.
That, that far west side, I mean, it's, it's possible, yeah, it's, I mean, someone might need a retaining wall, but if they wanted to do outdoor seating, picnic tables, or something like that, they could, they could do stuff back there. But, I mean, if you wanted to build something, you'd probably need a retaining wall.
Yeah, it's pretty steep.
Well, if you, if you put something forward, you could put a driveway back there, couldn't you?
But, possibly, yeah.
Like a delivery area in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put a retaining wall in there, yeah, you could. Okay, any other questions on this one? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is property sale of Lansing Town Center replat Lot 1. Kansas City Community Col, Kansas City, Kansas Community College has approached staff about purchasing Lot 1 of Town Center replat for a purchase price of 30,000 per acre for a total price of $360,000 for the 12 acres that make up Lot 1. The commercial real estate agreement would facilitate the lot, and the sale of Lot 1 for the future construction of a community college campus in this location. I need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a commercial real estate sales contract and other pertinent documents on behalf of the city of Lansing related to the sale of Lot 1, Lansing Town Center replat.
Oh, move, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
I'm a long way from downtown Kansas City, Kansas, over the years, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
My kids graduated from summer academy, and we were both offered the Presidential Scholarship at that time. And I realize that taxing issues are different. Is there, and it may be truly to ask you, because you, there's a program like that up here?
Actually, we're going to have Dr. Moser come up and talk.
Okay.
After we vote on this, so you'll have an opportunity to ask some questions right after we vote on this. Okay?
There's a suspense on this, right? There's a date, I could have sworn I read something like that.
A, a date?
Yeah.
Well...
Or, we say future, there's a, there's a, actually, a goal.
Right, and he'll, he'll talk about that.
Yeah, I was going to say, Dr. Moser would be able to talk dates better than I would be able to.
If you have a specific question for Dr. Moser, we're going to call him up after we vote on the sale. If anybody has a question on the sale part? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Dr. Moser, please.
Well, whew, yeah, thank you very much. I'm Greg Moser, I'm the president of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. I've been there for four and a half years now, and one of the things that I've wanted to do is grow our presence and our services that we provide to Leavenworth County. So, thank you, Mayor McNeil, personally, and on behalf of the board, and everyone at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. We want to express our appreciation and gratitude to you, the city, the, I'm sorry, bifocals. To you, City Administrator, Mr. Vandal, Director of Community and Economic Development, Matt Schmidt, the entire staff, and the entire Lansing City Council, so, for supporting this initiative. This action, I believe, is truly multi-generational. It's an investment in the city of Lansing, Leavenworth, and the entire Leavenworth County. The plat of land just directly across the street from us, off of 7, it really, it shows your vision for the future and the commitment to education and economic development in the city of Lansing and the entire county. We hope to be building, or be opening, in 2027, but there's a lot of work to be done before we get to that point. Also, being the property, the plat that you have created, being located almost exactly in between Lansing High School and Leavenworth High School, it's going to create greater access to dual and concurrent enrollment for your students, and it will save their parents thousands of dollars for every single student that they will send through that program. And they'll be able to graduate from high school and with a two-year college degree at exactly the same time, get them ready to transfer to a four-year institution, or be successful in the workforce and a career all at exactly the same time. The plat that you've created, and at the cost the community college can afford, we thank you for that, discreetly appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you and the county to get the college site up and going just as soon as possible, so we can get a lot of these great outcomes for the citizens, the city, and all of Leavenworth County. So, again, thank you for your vision, we do appreciate that, and all of your team's efforts and work to make this happen. If appropriate, I, there might be questions?
Yeah, sure, any coun, any of the council have a question? Sure, go, Dan.
How big of a sign can you put up saying, "Future Place"?
Absolutely. Well, we didn't think a sign was big enough, so we're going to buy a diesel tractor and big old Conex box, and we're going to wrap it, and it will say, "With your help, future home of KCKCC." Already been working with architects to design a facility. We've looked at other properties, so they've been playing with that, they're going to redesign it so it fits this property, and we're going to put a big, beautiful picture of the vision of what the campus might look like. Again, we, we don't have a revenue source in Leavenworth County. There is a mill levy in Wyandotte County, but, you know, what does that look like in the county of Leavenworth? So, we'll need some help to help build it and then to, to maintain it, along with other revenue sources we have from the state. Try and keep everything as affordable as possible. We have the lowest tuition rate, you know, in the area, so we're really looking forward to it. We have Ms. Marcia Irvine with us, the director for the Leavenworth Pioneer Career Center, who's, I know many of you have known for years, so we're happy to work with her. Whole wealth of programs, it might change or add on to as we build the site. You know, Le, Wy, Wyandotte County, Wyandotte County, the land is spilling up, shh, don't tell anyone. So, really, the next place to grow is Leavenworth County, because everyone wants access. I, I work heavily with the Lieutenant Governor and Economic Development and Attraction. We helped with the Hills Pet Food Nutrition Plant coming in. I was with the Panasonic, I was with the Lieutenant Governor going to Panasonic out in Reno, Nevada, helped with Urban Outfitters, I helped with IBM in Columbia, Missouri. So, there's a lot of growth opportunity for Leavenworth County, and, and really what they need is a ready workforce, and community colleges are that engine to create that workforce. So, we're ready to go. I'm a workaholic, I don't sleep. We built 105,260-bed student housing complex that we just finished and opened up this fall, which is beautiful if you come on campus. On Tuesday night, our, we've raised, we have a fundraiser, our camp, capital campaign going for downtown KCK to help the urban core. We've raised $35 million for the college's portion of that in two years. Tuesday night, the board signed an agreement to move forward with that project at $48 million, up to $50 million. Tomorrow night, we'll be accepting an award at the KCK Chamber of Commerce, so we're on the move. We're ready to come up here and add some more greater opportunity for the city of Lansing and the residents and, and all of the county.
Yes.
Do you see, congratulations on all that, by the way.
Thank you.
That's hard work. That's, that's you and your staff working really, really hard to do that.
Thank you.
Recruiting and soliciting and growth. Do you see this campus that you, we're talking about, do you see technical-type courses coming to this campus? Because you phenomenal work with your college, with those technical trades that I'm identifying. Is that also going to be included in this?
Yes, sir. It'll be both general education and technical programs, of course, more construction. We're taking our resident, residential construction program, we're adding another year, making it a commercial construction technology program, removing machining into advanced manufacturing and automation engineering, and robotics, and controllers, and CNC, and PLCs, and hydraulics. And, I, I was a defense contractor prior to higher ed, so I came up on the technical side of the house, and that's what I've been doing for, for 30 years now. So, we work really closely with our business and industry partners to develop custom programs or courses within programs to meet their specific needs. We're meeting with Chad out at Pet Hills, the Food Nutrition Plant. We're meeting with another company that hasn't even, they have an LOI, but they haven't even decided to move to Kansas yet, but we're already creating a customized curriculum for them that has a lot of advanced robotics for it. So, we're, we work very closely with them, and they'll, it'll be the same, same here to meet Leavenworth, Lansing's more specific needs to the business and industry that's here and looking to come here.
Anybody else?
This is a big dang deal.
Yeah.
This is huge.
Thank you, sir.
This is, this is a great day.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have a lot of great people working on it.
We're going around the center of a lot of high schools here, right out, Pleasant Ridge High School.
Yeah.
Tonga Noxie, Baser, Piper, Lansing, Leavenworth, there's a lot of schools right here.
Southern Johnson County, or Northern Johnson County.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we thought this is a, a great location, and again, thank you to the mayor and, and his team for sitting together and, and recognizing that, and making that multiple pieces, the multiple... and making that multiple pieces, the multiple plats come together. So, twelve acres is a nice big spot that we can do some good work.
This is just, this is just a thought that I've had so many, so many years. I'm a retired middle school principal, when I came to this district, it was, everybody was college-bound. And I thought, well, what about kids that aren't ready for college? That's not the path they wanna take. And there was very little for those kids. And the programs that your college provides is essential and answers a lot of needs, so that we're meeting the needs of all kids, just not those sixty, seventy percent that are very good. And so many of those kids would go to college and then, if they didn't know why they were there.
Yeah.
Really had no direction. Retention rate was not really high.
Yeah.
And that was a well-kept secret, you know, that I, I could not understand why we didn't talk about it and try to answer those needs.
Yeah, and a lot of our graduates.
Early nineties, early two thousands.
Our graduates make a lot more than bachelor degree graduates, so always tout that whenever I can. Thank you.
Can you talk just a little bit on the density of people that you're expecting to be at this campus? Teachers, students?
You know, I didn't bring that information up here with me tonight, but as we've been looking at the, the programs and the staffing and all that, we have all those, those numbers. It will be some, a lot of the same programs that we have in our current site, but we'll be able to triple the volume of students that we'll be able to accept, and, and we'll be more centrally located. We appreciate working with, you know, Leavenworth Public Schools for many, many years, but we, you know, we believe this is the answer, location, location, location. We'll be able to serve a significant number of students here.
Ma'am, your program is phenomenal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Our kids have the opportunity to go there, and what a great experience it was for them.
Thank you very much. My pleasure it is, as a former academic advisor, seeing those kids coming in that their parents are like, they're going to college, and the kids looking at me like, I'm looking at another book.
They don't want to go to college.
And having that opportunity for that combination of the tech programs and the other.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And we can get you the information, Dan, so we'll get that.
Yes, sir.
Some kids are ready for a four-year, right off the bat.
Yeah.
My daughter was. My son wasn't.
Right.
So, he took advantage of the two-year.
Absolutely.
Was prepared and then went on to KU.
I always do like to tout that we are college.
Correct.
Just two-year.
Yeah, that's.
Two-year.
My son qualified for the Presidential Scholarship, you know, and he got two years at KCK. He didn't want to go to KU. Didn't last semester out there, so he disqualified himself from the Presidential Scholarship. So, a lot of people should benefit from your, your programs.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Great, thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate all of you.
Okay, item number five is ordinance number ten ninety-one, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Lansing, Kansas, Section seven point zero-four Parking Lot Design A General Standards Item Six. This item was remanded back to the Planning Commission at the October sixth City Council meeting to revise the footage requirement from item seven B from seventy-five feet to fifty feet. At the work session on August twenty-second, the council came up with the requirements for where gravel surfacing would be allowed in the city. Planning Commission at their September twenty-first and October twenty-sixth meetings approved recommending changes to the UDO to adopt the parking lot design general standards. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number ten ninety-one amending Section seven point zero-four Parking Lot Design A General Standards Item Six with the Unified Development Ordinance.
The move.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call it all.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed, item number six is additional construction and inspection services for K-seven Eisenhower project. The City Council approved the initial contract with, um, Benish?
Benish.
Benish, him too. Benish for the construction engineering and inspection for K-seven Eisenhower project for a total of one thousand, oh, a hundred thousand and, one hundred and nine thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty in February of twenty twenty-two. The original completion date for the project was November twentieth, twenty twenty-two. This action will add up to eight weeks of inspection services to cover the remaining work on the project. So, I need a motion to accept supplemental agreement for the CEI, CE and I services from Benish in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand dollars and authorize the mayor's signature.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions for Mike on this one?
Eight, eight more weeks to finish the project?
We're not sure.
We don't believe it'll take all eight weeks, but we want to have a contingency in place. There's still a window for them to get the majority of the work finished this year. We're looking at fifty-degree weather next week, that's gonna help. As you notice, they've been pouring concrete in below freezing temperatures, which they are allowed to do under the guidelines, but that, this is a, this is, I, I would say more like a, more of a worst-case scenario. If there's specific questions about the CE and I, Wade Heim with Benish is here, he's the lead inspector, he's the, he's actually the, the construction engineer assigned to the projects. We are, we are going to try to get some asphalt down next week, that's the, that's the plan. What does the temperature have to be on that? I've been pulled up before.
Base is thirty and?
About fifty for the base.
Okay.
The surface is forty, if you use a more mixed asphalt additive, which KDOT allows. So, I would say we need some forty-degree days, first week of December.
How many?
Probably asphalt.
How many days will that be?
They were able to do the first north half in two days of surface. There are some, there's some base that needs to get done, so, real quickly, right now, they're building the lane in front of Tractor Supply. They need to get the base asphalt for that end. When they get that in, they can then shift the traffic over there and then build a new island.
I just heard fifty-degree weather next week, so I was wondering if it would be, if that's.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be fifty.
Okay.
For the base, I think it's thirty-five for the base.
Okay, great.
I heard Mike say build the island, they aren't shutting down Main Street again, are they?
No, there are no more full closures in the, in the, in the plan.
Right.
There, there will be inconvenience, let's make sure everyone understands, when we do the final milling overlay, it will be, it will be a couple days of inconvenience, and there, there may be some pavement markings that might have to wait till spring, but pavement markings will not prevent us from opening, we can use temporary pavement markings over the winter. And there, if, if we lose our window of asphalt, we will make sure that we do what we can to demobilize for winter, and then these guys will go into a pause. And the base will get, I mean, the base for sure should get done this year, so it would just be the surface.
So, the asphalt plants are still open right now?
They're still going, yeah.
Okay.
Fortunately, KDOT also has a lot of work that they're trying to get done, so.
What makes the, what's the contributing factor to the plant growth? So many days in a certain period?
Well, yeah, I mean, if the, if there's, if it's too cold, the asphalt plant can't make, nobody's gonna buy it, so. And we're fortunate, I mean, right now, they're getting their asphalt at Leavenworth. That's a very short haul, so we don't have to worry about temperature problems there. If they do have to start batching out of Olathe, or, it will make it more challenging, but they'll, that's for them to figure out.
Okay, any more questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Have a motion and a second. Call it all.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed, reports, any department heads? No. City Attorney?
Nothing, Mayor.
Ken, City Administrator?
So, I know Jeanette Levy-Holdeman reached out to me, I know she wanted to attend the council meeting tonight, but she's, she's under the weather. She wanted me to pass along that, that she's thankful to the City Council for putting the aquatics question out to the voters and letting the voters decide, so she wanted me to extend that comment to you all. I know, so it's been kind of a busy week with some of that aquatic stuff, so I, I do wanna just verify a few things, 'cause I think there's still some, some misconceptions out there. So, this updated sales tax rate, it wouldn't take effect until July one, twenty twenty-three, so it's still a ways away. And also, people should try to remember too, even with this, Lansing's sales tax rate would be nine point four percent. Like, for instance, Leavenworth's is nine point five, Shawnee's is nine point six. You know, a lot of places in Wyandotte County, Johnson County, you're paying nearly ten. So, our sales tax rate, while a little bit higher, would still be less than a lot of neighboring communities.
It is a sales tax.
And it's a sales tax.
I see some stuff on social media, people talking about their house payments going up, and I'm like, no.
Yeah, and, where, where that's kind of frustrating too, the, the title of that post said "sales tax", and, and obviously, people didn't, didn't read that, but, but anyway, we're, so even though it, it did pass by a little bit of a margin, we're still trying to educate people and let them know, it's not a property tax, it's a sales tax, our sales tax rate is still going to be a little bit less than neighboring communities. You know, another thing to keep in mind too regarding the timing of everything, we're probably gonna have a design contract on the agenda at an upcoming council meeting, and design engineering will probably take several months. And we're, we're in this challenging spot right now where we're really, a lot of people are very excited about this. But the flip side is, you don't want to rush anything. We don't want the, the engineers and design consultants to rush anything either. So, but, but the wheels are in motion on that, they'll have a design engineering contract coming up very soon. And then I know, I want to say at the December fifteenth City Council meeting, I think there will be some type of documentation for the City Council to affirm that election and affirm those results, and then once that's in place, we would forward that on to the Kansas Department of Revenue for their files, so then they can begin talking to people and saying, hey, the sales tax rate's going up. So, that's kind of where that's at. I don't have any firm dates or anything like that. I know people, like I said, people are excited, I know there's a lot of people excited out there, but we don't have firm dates quite yet, other than just saying, design engineering will, will get rolling soon.
Realistically, we're looking at twenty twenty-four.
Maybe twenty.
It might be twenty twenty-five, and that's, and that's where it goes back to, we, we'd spoken a while back, things would have to fall perfectly with no delays, no material issues or anything for it to be twenty twenty-four. But in reality, there's also a pretty good chance it could be twenty twenty-five if there are any delays. You know, the other thing that, that's been brought up a lot too is interest rates. Maybe by twenty twenty-five, interest rates will be slightly less too, you never know, I guess. But, but yeah, there's just a lot of balls in the air right now, so.
I mean, we will, we will forge ahead, I mean, but it may or may not happen.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could do something like that, I think, yeah. I know, I, I believe one of you guys had asked me about maybe starting to clear out some of that, some of that property, and that's something we could talk to the consultant and Lina Weaver about, I think that'd be fine. 'Cause, you know, like we'd even talked about a little bit before, we're not even going to need all of that property. Like, there's going to be some excess land that, that we could use for trails or a small park or something, so.
I've had some citizens ask me if they can extend Angel Falls Trail to the perimeter of the property to give them a longer walk, instead of having them walk back and forth the same way four times. And things of that nature, consider that cleaning it out or just a little bit cleaner looking?
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
When we design and get the final design engineering stuff, we can, whatever we vote on, I mean, we can say we wanna trail all the way around the thing.
Put the trail high enough it doesn't flood. Like the one in downtown Leavenworth.
Just note, it may not be concrete like you're seeing right now, 'cause you don't want to know what concrete costs a day.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
The goal is twenty-four, if we can do it in twenty-four, but it's likely, if there's any delays, it's gonna be twenty-five.
There, there are people are gonna say, okay, we passed the tax, where's the pool?
Yeah, and we.
That's why you brought up one July.
Yeah, and the, and the thing is too, you know, I'm, I'm actually kind of prepared for that. I'm, I'm bracing myself for those, those comments.
That's why I said the line, because you could put it coming in twenty twenty-five backslash twenty-five.
That's true, the, the other thing.
Something in the connection that kind of explains the way ahead and kind of the timeline.
And, and even though the. Yeah, we can, we can do it at a city administrator coffee, or, or I was gonna say too, I mean, even, even though the election is completed, we can still do public forums to talk about features and things like that. So, we can still do things like that to try to get the word out to folks. But no, that's, that is a really good point you brought up, so. But that's, that's all I had, so.
All right, thanks, Ken. We'll start with Marcus.
Okay, so, hey, congratulations on Crystal Black Bear for that award, the Humane Society, that was really cool. Tony, appreciate you giving that award and a shout-out to our Humane Society and the volunteers down there. It is a remarkable, remarkable organization that's run to take care of the animals that are brought in from all over the county. Ken, great job on our Lansing Journal, that thing's just off the charts, that is awesome. Very informative, very well laid out, and, and I can't thank you, and thanks for writing the mayor's comments all the time, too.
Well, I gotta write yours, so somebody's gotta write mine.
Congrats, Tim, and Matt, and staff, on the great job with the property and the layout, and to bring KCK Community College in here. Thank you all for coming tonight, I really appreciate the, the presentation, and, and we all look forward. I know we are all excited about it, so we're all excited about it. As soon as you can get that big container dropped, the future and land designs, all kinds of stuff, the sooner the better. And, and Mike, great job on the K-seven stuff. I know you get beat up a lot, and I blow you up a lot on the phone and texts and emails with, come on, man, you gotta hurry this thing up, you gotta get it going. Traffic is delayed, so it's gonna be an incredible intersection, and you've done a great job, Mike. Thanks, I appreciate it. That's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thanks, Marcus, Jesse?
Yeah, I'm excited about the school passing, it's really, I think it's gonna be great for the community. One thing I hope is all the people that voted no, you know, I hope someday that you end up at the Aquatic Center and you look back on it and you go, man, this place is awesome, why did I vote no? I just hope for that someday, so. You know, with the election here and gone, I would want to give you some numbers. There are six thousand nine hundred and sixty-six registered voters in Lansing. Three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight people voted, that's forty-nine point seven eight percent. I think we could do better than that, I really do. That's all I've got.
What is like, uh, oh, nevermind. I thought that was a pretty good turnout, actually, if you do like, go by US standards, that was pretty darn high, but.
For a mid, that's, that's great.
Yeah, congratulations, and we're all excited to have KCC, KCKCC here. And I'm really excited to get that intersection done, 'cause I wasn't thinking this morning, and I drove that way. Not smart. And Mayor, on this day in history, November seventeenth, nineteen forty, the Green Bay Packers were the first NFL team to fly to an away game. And it's high.
But did they lose?
No, not when they lost, they lost to the New York Giants.
That's when they were, that's when they were good, right? Ken?
I thank KCKCC for their interest and the staff for making it happen. I think it's gonna be great for Lansing and be a pivotal point to get some more businesses in that area, and I appreciate it, that's all, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Karen?
You know, when I came on the council, there seemed, there was, for a long time, we talked about sewers. And, you know, not, that's not the greatest thing in the world to talk about, but they're necessary, so I understood that. But the fact that, let's think about the work we're having done at Bernard Park. We got KC, KCC coming, the pool passed. I guess the thought is, is that good things happen if you wait long enough and you, you gut it out, you have vision. I guess the thought is, is that good things happen if you wait long enough and you, you gut it out, you have vision. This is just a great time, great time for our city. So, and again, I don't think people really understand how big a deal it is for the community college to be. That is, that is huge, so that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Karen. Don?
What I was gonna say has already been said by my fellow councilman. I don't have anything else.
All right, thanks. Dan?
Well, Eisenhower intersection across the road over here. Been on the council for twenty years and we've talked and we, yes, it's gonna happen, no, it's not. And I think our public works director's done a fine job on getting everything organized up there. They're gonna have to get, we'll get through the road difficulties. I think it's real, I've heard, started to hear a lot of compliments about the way it's gonna turn out. We're finally figuring out, you know, that there's gonna be a standard turn lane and things. And they're seeing activity across the street. Mr. Schmitz, that, staff is, well, we just get a good staff. And you guys are all, all doing a good job bringing your group into us. I'm sure I was vocational training atticist, and I don't know if that's a dirty word now with you guys or not. But now I know what it's like where, you know, the college was a big thing back then, like Carrie said. And anymore you need, you know, your building trades, your mechanics, your technology. You got kids out there that can't even drive nails, you know, but they can sure beat the, beat the dickens out of the computer. And that's all I got to say.
No, no you don't. Oh, no you don't.
I agree with everything that's been said tonight for everybody. But the KCKCC is going to pay off for years, four years. We'll be seeing positive results of that for a long time. And since the pool passed, I have to find a place where I can practice my double black back stroke flip belly flop.
You can come over and I will, it's only four feet deep, so.
Oh, one thing, I'm sorry. Marcus, remind me, the angel trees are out front. Somebody grab a couple of tags for those less fortunate. Now I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller? Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.